Everyone will be recording the session. Looks like the recording has started. Okay, thank you. Good morning. I will now call to order this agenda review workshop meeting for the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. Trustees. The purpose of the workshop is to develop and discuss potential agenda items for the next quarterly meeting of the board, which is currently set to take place December 6, 2022. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I welcome everyone in attendance and thank my fellow board members, Florida Virtual Schools CEO and all of our Florida Virtual Schools staff members who have who have prepared us for today's meeting as as always. They they do a great job in getting all the materials to us in a timely manner. So thank you. With that stated, let's proceed with the role call. Mr. Moore, can you call role?
Dr. John Warret.
Present.
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Present.
Dr. Tony Arsa. Don't see him logged in. Ms. Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Robert Conerens.
Present, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Edward Poswoli.
Present.
All right, thank you. And given that fortunately we have we have a quorum because even now that we've got the extra members. So thank you for that. Next, I'll open the floor for any comment remarks or comments or remarks from co-chair and board members. So Madam Co-chair and Ms. Ryder, any comments?
No, just good morning, everyone.
And Dr. Arsa is not on yet, I believe. So Ms. Garcia.
Good morning. Nice to see everyone.
It is. And member Connor Herron is not able to talk. I assume he's just listening.
As of right now, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Board Member Poswoli.
Good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well.
Well, with that, and as I said, thank you to everyone for preparing this and thank you for everyone being here. And like I think when we had this this meeting the last time, we were waiting for Hurricane Ian to come on on shore. Now we're we're waiting for Tropical Storm Nicole to come on shore. So hopefully everyone's safe and and prepared for it. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Alguers to lead today's presentation and discuss the proposed agenda items for our December 6 meeting.
Thank you. Just like, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead, David.
I'm sorry. Just let me interject in my unclassy way that for the record, Board Member Cornerrance is listening and basically the responses that we're hearing are by proxy through his assistant right now. That's just for the record. Thank you.
So he counts as a board as being present, correct?
He is present, yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. A.
Quite okay. I was just going to say we have our own Tropical Storm Nicole and Nikki Lowry here. So she's reckoned with.
I've been waiting for this moment for many years. Yeah, to have my name.
So today's purpose is to review the agenda for the December 6 quarterly board meeting. I'll walk through our leadership team's proposed agenda items with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions along the way. Item two will be the approval of minutes and it'll be requested for the Board of Trustees September 27, 2022 Quarterly Board Meeting Minutes and for minutes of today's workshop meeting, November 8, 2022 Agenda Review Workshop Meeting Minutes. Section three will be Public Comments section. Following Public Comments, I will present the CEO Report and number four. Item four, the reports and presentations are going to include three agenda items, the quarterly financial report for the period ending September 30, 2022. Beth Brunner, the manager for the FLBS Foundation, will share with you the Foundation's September 2022 Quarterly Report. And for 4.3, I will present some student highlights. Section five will be Proposed Consents, item five, which will be contracts. We're going to have four proposed consent contact agenda items. And if you can start bringing Joanne Sarah into the panel so she can discuss these. Joanne Sarah, Senior Director Procurement, is going to review items 5.1 through 5.4.
She's moving over now, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Joanne.
Good morning. My camera is not opening. It's on. There we go. Give me one second. When I was promoted, my notes dropped off. Okay, good morning. Thank you, Dr. Alguers, and good morning, board members. It's a pleasure to see you this morning. We have I have four agenda items for procurements and contracts. And as always, as I'm walking through them, please stop me. I welcome your questions and and welcome any discussion. The first item for consideration is an increase of contract spend authority. This is a standard item that we have on the board agenda item, board agenda, as I monitor all of our contracts that we have to make sure none of them will exceed either the board approved threshold or a previously approved threshold by you. I have two potential and I'm anticipating the first one is driversed.com. Driversed.com is from whom we license our driver's ed course. We the board initially approved to spend for the initial five-year term of the agreement for up to $13,267,500. We are in the fifth and final year of the initial term of that contract and we are on track to exceed that. So we are going to be asking for an increase of and spend authority of $2 million to bring the five-year contract total to $15,267,000. We will also be asking for approval of not to exceed $3 million per year for each year of the renewal. And there are five optional one-year renewals under this agreement. The spend under this agreement is again what we pay for licensing fees. It does not represent our revenue. We were putting together a spreadsheet and information that will show the board members our revenue that will be routing before the board member before the board in December. The second item.
How many students go through that driver's ed course?
I believe that's still our number one course. I can include that those exact numbers on the information where we send their revenue for this course. So you have our our historical enrollments and what we're anticipating for this year.
Is this a course that any student can take? They're not necessarily a Florida Virtual School full-time students. These are regular brick and mortar kids can come in and take.
Yes, absolutely. That's this is we have approximately 50,000 students in this course. And that's or and that's across all that's across all of our full-time flex franchise. Really, it's all for it's directly for any student in the state of Florida. They can't take the course until they're 14 and a half because it is preparing them to get their learner's permit for the driver education course. It's a half-credit course. So yeah, and and we only pay driversed.com based upon successful completion of those students. So if a student starts the course and drops it, we do not pay driversed.com this licensing fee.
And just more information, does does brick and mortar schools offer a similar course?
Brick and mortar schools, some of them actually still have driving ranges. Many kind of let them go by the wayside and close them up because of the costs over the years. So this does help them. A lot of schools use them in their lab settings where the students during the school day will go into the whatever the computer lab is, media center, and take the courses there. And as Joanne mentioned, it is the number one course you use. We generate about 22 million.
That's great. I mean, then so then in the school districts promote it to us for students to take it with us, I assume that's.
They do, and it's a favorite among seniors who are missing half a credit and need to catch it before they graduate. A lot of kids take it then. And again, a lot of younger kids who are preparing for the drivers that also drivers permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? Okay, the next contract that I anticipate may be under this board agenda for increased authority is our contract that was awarded by ITB for hardware software purchases with CDWG. We are on track right now. The board previously approved for last fiscal year a spend of 3,500,000. We're in the final year of this agreement as well. We are monitoring the spend closely. We've had to expand some of our IT programs and purchase some additional things related to our move. We maybe need an additional 300,000 under this contract for a new fiscal year 23 spend of 3,800,000. Again, fun numbers will be final before the board. We're just monitoring the spend now and anticipating what our needs are through the end of the year. The next board agenda item is to approve the award for Salesforce Analysis and Improvement Implementation Services. We released a request for a proposal competitive solicitation RFP on August 25, 2022. For this item, we received three responses and the evaluation committee is recommending that we award to Coastal Cloud LLC. The goals of this solicitation and this award is really to improve the data reporting and quality that we're currently getting from Salesforce, the Salesforce system. We want to maximize system efficiency and specifically as it relates to the sales process and find some improvements there. We want to standardize how we use the system across the organization and to really better integrate with other FLBS enterprise systems. The term for this agreement is is three years with two optional one-year renewals. We're anticipating a not-to-exceed for phase one, which is the improvement analysis phase of 168,800 and 581,200 for phase two, which is the improvement implementation. So what what comes out of phase one for findings will feed into phase two for the actual implementation of those improvements. So the total not-to-exceed cost for the initial both phases is 750,000. Any questions on that item? Okay. The next item is likely actually coming off of the board agenda. I had this again as a placeholder. This is to approve the award for banking and P-card services. Florida Virtual School's current provider is Truist, formerly SunTrust. We've been exploring options to ensure that we are getting the best value service and security for our banking and P-card services. The reason this will likely drop off the agenda item is because the spend is under the board author is under the threshold requiring board authority. So we'll keep you posted on that item. Any questions on that item?
So you are we moving from Truist to JP Morgan Chase? Is that what I'm reading here?
Likely that's not final yet. We are in negotiations. We're looking at a piggyback contract with JP Morgan. Our finance and procurement team interviewed several different banking companies in the marketplace. And right now it seems like JP Morgan is the best fit for us, which will provide the best value. But again, we're in negotiations, so I hesitate to say that that's a final decision because negotiations can fall through.
Now, do do we use both a purchasing card and a travel card or is it just a single card?
It is a single card. And the P-card program we actually anticipate will result in revenues through some rebate programs and other things that are available. So that won't really be a cost to the organization. Obviously, banking services, there's always a small fee, but that will be well below the board threshold requiring your approval, which is why it may drop off the board agenda or likely will drop off the board agenda for December.
Okay.
Okay, the final item is supplemental tutoring services. This is an invitation to bid that is on the street right now. We posted it on October 31 and the responses are due November 21. This award will be made to the lowest-cost responsive and responsible bidder that meets the requirements in the solicitation. This is really for online K-12 one-on-one tutoring for many subject areas. The key goals are to improve student success through educational instruction. It will provide a, you know, it'll bridge the gap, the skills gap that students may be experiencing, especially due to COVID. It will be there'll be measurable acceleration and growth in academic performance. Each student that are approved for the program will be targeted within the three FLBS schools, the full-time schools, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as FLBS Flex Program supporting part-time students. There will be a tutoring, an internal FLBS tutoring supervisor to assist to assist with the identification of targeted students. They'll monitor the attendance and serve as the primary point of contact. It'll be for about two to three hours per week for those students where the need has been identified for up to eight weeks. We will have pre-and post tests to progress monitor to make sure that we are seeing that gap improve and to make sure that the program is successful. Overall, we are anticipating 15% of the student population will be served. The fiscal impact of this is actually awarded grants. We were just notified this morning that we're awarded the intensive after-school and weekend activities grant. So we're very excited about that. In addition, we do anticipate approval of a second grant, the ARP supplemental programs as well. So the estimated cost of the program is 3 million over two years. Again, we won't have the awardee until the bids come in and on November 21.
So is is this a fixed-price contract or is it billed for you per hour usage or or partial hour usage? How does it? How does it work?
It is based upon usage. So we the way we formatted the invitation to bid is we asked for bidders to give us an hourly rate for the tutoring.
So and and is it so if a kid wants tutoring and he only uses per half hour, would we build for the whole hour or would we build for the partial hour?
I think the program the the program, the way it's developed is it's not an on-demand by the students. The students are really set up on a regular tutoring schedule, and I believe they they may do half-hours or hours depending on their needs and and how big their gap is that we're trying to help them close. So it's really going to be tailored depending on the student's need, but I can provide the cost breakdown when those bids come in if you'd like.
I have a couple of questions for you, Joanne.
Sure.
So I see here that it says that the goal is to increase successful student completion by 2%. So that means course completions?
Yes, that would be course completion.
So does the course completion correlate with actual student achievement gains?
Um, it should, but really for more specific program questions like that, I'd love to pull up Robin Winder. She is our Senior Director of Full-Time Instruction. I don't want to speak out of turn and and she knows more about the details there.
Yeah, we'll have Joe, if you can bring up Robin and meanwhile, Joanne on the fiscal impact. It says a million over a two-year period.
I've updated I've updated the board agenda items since then. My apologies. As these were, we were drafting this very early in the ITB process, so my apologies on the dated information on that agenda item, but you will have updated agenda items shortly.
And then is this funded fully by a grant? Is that did I understand that right?
More than one grant, actually. Right now, just this morning, we received notice confirmation that we awarded the intensive after-school and weekend activities grant. And we're anticipating a second grant called the ARP supplemental programs that we've applied for, and we really do anticipate receiving as well. So those two grants will pay for this tutoring program.
So this will the we'll contract with a company that's essentially providing teachers who are willing to do who are being paid to do one-on-one virtual tutoring.
Yeah, we have an onboard here now so she can go ahead and feel those.
Hey, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. So yes, Board Member Garcia, you are correct. We will, for the first time in our history, be contracting with a tutoring company. Typically, we like to keep that in-house because we feel like we know our students better. But in this instance, because of COVID and the skills gap that we are seeing, we really feel like this is sort of a blessing with this grant because we're going to be able to target our students very specifically, the ones who have those skill gaps with the pre-test like Joanne was saying, and we will it won't be that they can call and say, hi, I'd like to tutor, to your point, Dr. Watchred. It will be us recommending them so that we're keeping an eye on it and watching them through progress monitoring specifically. Should it correlate with course completion? Absolutely, in this case especially, but we will have indicators along the way if there are still gaps and they're not getting solved.
Okay, and then so this is the first time that we're not using FLBS teachers for tutoring?
Correct.
So is this something where where should we be considering using FLBS teachers as an opportunity for them to be earning more or engaging more with their students? What's the benefit of not using FLBS teachers?
So that's a great question. We received a grant last year that was specific to full-time and K-3 English learning, the ELA scores. And we did use our internal teachers and supplemented them because that was scalable with the number of students that we're trying to hit now to use our teachers wouldn't necessarily be scalable for the type of tutoring that these students are going to need. It's not just homework. I need help with this. We're really going to focus on where those gaps are in their learning across the board in the core subjects.
Are are I have a question.
For a vote right now, currently. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So like a parent couldn't call you and say, my my child is having, I see they're having issues. Can we get them into tutoring? That it doesn't work that way.
They could call us and we would definitely look at that, but chances are if this goes the way it should go, we'll we'll know that already.
Right, okay. And then you said there's going to be one person internally keeping an eye on this whole thing. Is that going to be enough for all these students just to have like one person watching all this?
So we're going to watch that. That's a great question. We're going to start with one and we can scale if we need to. There's a lot of support. We have a manager and we'll have a coordinator. Right now, we have the manager for the program I was talking about a minute ago, the K-3 just ELA. And we're adding a coordinator who is going to be doing more of the sort of the nuts and bolts while the manager is watching the overall program.
Like the day-to-day and all the numbers and if it's really working or not. At what point do you decide that this isn't working or we're going to have to go to another level? Or I mean, do you have that in place yet?
We so we've not chosen the vendor yet.
Oh, that's true. Yeah.
Yes, there'll be discussions. But that's what's what's very unique about this and not to keep beating the horse, you know. But because we will be progress monitoring all along, we'll see that those gaps should be being addressed.
Right.
And they're not being handed over from their teacher. They still have their teacher to help them at all times.
This is extra.
It is. It's.
I think this is this is amazing. This is great. This is like this isn't going to hurt. This is a great, great thing for certain students who, you know, who really need it, who actually need it. This can put them over the edge and get them to pass a course that maybe they wouldn't have passed.
Yeah, we're very excited.
Yeah, no, I think I think this is great. It's, you know, it's a lot. This is a lot of extra work though for you. This is a lot.
But the tutoring company, are they will they be familiarized with the curriculum? So that they're they're working in parallel with the teacher and what they're doing to help bring the students up to to be successful?
Right. So since we'll be dealing more with skills gaps versus actual assignments, Dr. Watchred, these are these are standards-based and the tutoring company that we'll choose will have to already have those qualifications.
To the point of whether we find that it's not quite working, joint prison out on the contract, right, as with all our contracts?
Always. And and this is because it's federally grant-funded. It's actually a part of the federal grant requirements that we always have an out if if a vendor is not performing with federal money, as is the progress monitoring piece. We have to show that the program is working as a part of these grant awards. There's a lot of controls. That would work in your favor if these things are are working. It's that I mean, those are good numbers. Usually, they're they're better numbers. I have one more question. This is I mean, this isn't based on the company that you're going to hire, but like when teachers used to do it before, was there any conflict of interest? Were they allowed to tutor their own students or do they always have to, you know, be with it? It has to be another student from another class.
Because it was very small in nature, because it was just a full-time K through three, they ran into their own students.
Able to, okay, so no conflict.
But I actually think that's helpful because they have a better.
They know them, right? They know them and what they need.
Correct.
Thank you.
I see Member Cornerrance's virtual hand is up.
Yeah, so everybody's excited about this. So you know, I go the other way as far as an out, but if it's working successfully and we run out of grant money, can we get proactive and look at budget money to keep the continuity going? So you know, the grant money runs out. We have money in the budget to keep the program if it is successful.
I have the same question.
Absolutely. I mean, and and some of the discussions I had with you about our five-year plan, in some of these, in many cases, when you have grant funding, it goes away. And part of the grants often require that you go ahead and have a plan to take it over in the future. So and our strategic plan, student achievements are number one, you know, number one goal. So that would be where the resources should be placed. So absolutely, that is something that we would look at.
And these awards, we are looking at two years. Just so you know, you know, we are covered at least for two years with these grants that we're anticipating getting, well, one that we've gotten and one that we anticipate getting. Which is a great start. Two years is a is a good amount of time to actually see where things are going. And if there, I mean, if you have a six-month grant, it's not going to show you anything. But like a year or two years is is great. So.
So given given the interest in this topic, I think it'd be good to get reports on the success of it as once it's implemented and ongoing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a great idea. That's a great idea. This is about closing the gap, right? I mean, this is what this is about. And so we probably also ought to begin lining up support inside of the state for the continuation of some of the supplemental money, provided we're getting results with this with this grant money.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Robin. Joanne, do you have another item or is that the last one?
That was the last one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. That was good.
That was good. Good discussion.
All right. Thank you. On the next item six is going to be the annual reports, proposed consent item. Going to present two reports for consent approval. One is the quarterly staff data report that we bring every quarter. And it summarizes personnel actions from the last quarter. Six, two will be the disposal of FLBS tangible assets and personal property. The facility at its apartment in the course of the Florida Virtual School move to our new Orlando headquarters, which we're getting to the end of it. Furniture's here, just has to start getting placed and some minor painting and things like that that need to occur. The assets that are fully depreciated in accordance with the FLBS depreciation schedules or were expensed at the time of acquisitions that are not capitalized, they're and they're either unfit for FLBS use or they're access items. Those items will be disposed of in a manner that best fits the needs of the organization up to and including an open sale donation to another school district or otherwise specified in statute. So some of these things have already been disposed of and that report will indicate what was disposed of and what happened to it. Item seven, any questions on item six consent items? Item seven is for proposed discussion. It'll be finance matters. I'm going to have one financial item for the board's proposed discussion agenda, and that's going to be the 2223 Budget Amendment Number Two. It's going to request approval of a proposed First Amendment to the 2223 Budget for the purpose of updating the Florida Virtual School Budget for estimated revenues and appropriation changes in the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund. Adjustments will include 146,000 increase in appropriations in the General Fund for Lean Six Sigma Training for additional staff and a 973,000 increase in revenues and appropriations in the Special Revenue Fund for federal grant awards and amendments in Title IX IDEA and Title I Grants. Agenda item will be updated with totals and then Exhibit A prior to the December 6 quarterly board meetings as Finance Department finalizes those numbers. Item eight, proposed first reading for policy revision and repeals. There'll be several of them. We're going to request the board's authorization to public the text and provide public notice of a hearing on these proposed policies, policy revisions and repeals. And Dr. David Daggett will be reviewing these at the December 6 board meetings. As you can see, that's a partial list. It will be fuller by the time December 6 rolls around, but we've started to fill in the items that have been reviewed and proffered. Item nine will be the proposed discussion for board policies, hearing and adoption. We have a number of those from the prior meeting of board policies, policy revision and repeals, which we'll put forward for the board's hearing and adoption in Agenda Item 91. Uh, of board policies, policy revision and repeals, which will put forward for the board's hearing and adoption in agenda item nine-one. And as you, those are from first reading from the last quarterly meeting. Then we'll have the general counsel comments, reports, presentation. Um, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to David at this point because I do think he has some things to discuss. Still here. Wow, I think David dropped off. There he is. He's, David's over in uh.
He's moving over now, sir.
Yeah, he was over in the attendees instead of the panelists. I'm not gonna hear the end of that.
Yeah, I was apparently uh demoted. Thanks very little.
Sorry.
You didn't, you didn't take the hint, David. I don't know.
I tried to log off, tried to log off. All right, there's my not-so-pretty face. All right, so very quickly, the couple of things. First of all, the uh boring old uh litigation shade meeting request and announcement, here I go. Uh, I am, as the general counsel of the uh Florida Virtual School, I am making a request for a litigation shade meeting with the board uh for purposes of the boards and legal councils discussion of litigation strategy and expenditures in strict compliance with section two eighty-six uh point oh one one subsection eight of the Florida statutes concerning a federal court lawsuit known as Florida Virtual School versus K twelve Inc. and K twelve Florida LLC. Case number six twenty C V twenty-three fifty-four, which case is currently pending in the uh District Court of the Middle District of Florida, Orlando Division. Notice is hereby given that this litigation shade meeting will take place upon or shortly after the commencement of the board's next quarterly meeting, which is set to begin at nine AM on December sixth uh twenty-twenty-two via Zoom video conference. Written public notice shall be provided in accordance with Florida law. It's anticipated that the litigation shade meeting will last somewhere around twenty to thirty minutes. Consistent with uh section two eighty-six oh one one subsection eight, the entire shade meeting will be transcribed by a certified court reporter and a verbatim copy of the transcript will be made um part of Florida Public Schools' public record. After the litigation has concluded in accordance with the statute. Those persons that are expected to be in attendance shall be limited to those prescribed by the statute, that is two eighty-six point oh one one. And it is therefore anticipated that the attendees will include um, Board of Trustees member uh and co-chair Linda Ryder, uh, Board Member Tony Arza, Board Member Kelly Garcia, Board Member Robert Cornarins, Board Member Edward Pozzoli, uh, the General Counsel, me, uh, David Daggett, the President and Chief Executive Officer of FLVS, uh, Dr. Louis Algais, Senior Assistant General Counsel, uh, Louis Guzman, and then our outside counsel, uh, Steve Luther of the Luther Law Firm, uh, and outside counsel Suzanne Bartow Hill, Sally Cully and Leonard Deethan of the Rumberger, Kirk and Caldwell Law Firm. And finally, our court reporter uh will be in attendance. And again, um.
David, I, I will plan on attending as well for the shade meeting. I'll come.
Oh, oh, very good. Excellent. Thank you for for adding that because I I had not included you.
Yeah.
Um, for for the record, it is uh our board chair, uh, Dr. John. And again, written notice will be uh issued in accordance with law.
All right.
Um, what, uh, two other things, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Okay. First of all, you'll note that the.
Analyst and he doesn't stop.
Right. Hey, you you made the mistake. Um, you'll note that the um agenda for the policies for first reading are anemic in comparison to our other um rather voluminous first reads. And that is because there's going to be a whole bunch of repeals. That is, we have such a mass of policies now, uh, new and improved policies that really we're taking another look at the legacies and seeing which ones really can be repealed. And then we're gonna uh focus on uh standards of conduct, ethics, so on and so forth. Um, uh, organization-wide, personnel uh wide. So we're making good progress there. The other thing, and this is a a very important. We've got, uh, I will have on uh the agenda at least uh two, if not three uh action items going to what I've called CEO contingencies. You'll recall that this board uh passed a resolution where I think it was back in June dealing with um the Deferred Retirement Option Plan and how there have been changes in the law that really are um have been reactive and remedial to the um teacher shortage that we're experiencing across the state whereby the Deferred Retirement Option Plan uh has been extended for certain instructional personnel from five years to eight. There have also been um remedial measures taking place statutorily in uh chapter one twenty-one, which is the FRS uh code, the Florida Retirement uh Plan Code. And that has also helped to reduce um, or I should, I should say, uh, extend uh further employment opportunities for public school retirees. We are uh hopeful and working toward uh uh changes in the law which will make those extensions uh available to us, which will also uh make available to us a shorter period of time where retirees from Florida Virtual School might choose to come back and be re-employed uh uh with us. Uh, in some systems in the K through twelve, or I should say early learning through twenty uh space in our public education system, uh, folks can come back as soon as thirty days after uh their retirement. So the current law is that i- there's a minimum of six months of uh of separation before the possibility of re-employment. And it, the law is unclear whether there is um a, an additional three years that can be tacked on to folks that are with FLVS and are currently in the Deferred Retirement Option Plan Program, which extends only to five years. So that's kind of the legislative backdrop of what we're experiencing. And as we've noted in the past, uh, one of those folks that are in the 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 five-year drop period, um, actually a little bit over that is uh Dr. Algais, our CEO. And his retirement um comes up June thirty of uh twenty twenty-three, which of course is the last day of our fiscal year, last day of our school year. And so we need to make plans a- as a board uh looking forward. So here's what I'm looking to do, and I wanted to just instead of put things on an agenda. Uh, the purpose of today's meeting is to build uh prospective uh agenda items. So one would be an easy one, an amendment to Dr. Algais's uh current contract, which expires in March of twenty twenty-four. We want to expedite uh the term of the contract so that it coincides with his um drop uh retirement date, which he must, he must separate as of June thirty of twenty twenty-three. So I'll place before the board, I intend to place before the board at its December meeting, uh, one action item to consider the amendment to Dr. A's contract. And all it does is it makes the initial term consistent. Uh, that the end of the initial term consistent with what Dr. A must do uh uh to qualify, continue his qualifications for drop, and we all want uh that protected. That's number one. Number two is I'm going to, I'm thinking of putting before the board a a standard CEO contract for an interim CEO. Uh, it'll have, it'll outline the basic uh terms and conditions of the interim CEO contract that'll look uh very much like Dr. Algais's. Um, I would put it in for a term of one year since it is an interim. And we can talk about what we want to do as far as, you know, specifics. Once I have the contract in front of you uh at the December meeting. Uh, for instance, we can talk about cancellation periods, contingencies, when it goes into effect. I'm assuming, but I'll write it in such a way that it would go into effect as of uh July one. Um, and we can figure all those things out uh at the board meeting and then proceed uh from there. So you'd have those two action items. And the third that I'm thinking about is kind of an alternative action item. Uh, where looking inwardly at internal candidates, um, you would uh, that the board would uh direct the Office of General Counsel, uh, because remember I work for you when it comes to the negotiation of your contract with the CEO. Um, that you would direct me to negotiate proposed contract in consultation with the board chair or co-chair. And when I say or, I mean whoever might be uh most available would would help. Um, and we would etch out a proposed contract with an internal candidate, which you could limit uh to uh, you know, the executive leadership team personnel. You can limit it however you'd like. That's alternatives A. Alternative B would be to direct HR to put out a vacancy announcement and arrange for um interviews and present final, for final interviews for you at a special meeting among uh CEO candidates. Either way, that that'd be a little bit more um, you know, time-consuming. We we know that and it's pretty tough to get together for all of these uh meetings and special meetings. Either way, it's my recommendation that uh the decision on the successor CEO uh is made no later than the March uh twenty twenty-three quarterly meeting of this board. So with all that, I wanted to put all that out there and see, there's no decisions to be made today. But I wanted to uh lay that out uh to the extent anyone had questions or points of view that you'd like to express now. And again, it's not, it's not a time for decision, Megan. We can, we can discuss as you all see fit.
And 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 David, you're going to send that all out in advance so that we have time to read through, digest it um uh as they go through in terms of the options. And and two, do we have uh from the executive team, do we have internal folks that would be interested in this uh interim position?
Um, I know of of one, yes.
Okay.
I had a question about the timeline. Um, the amendment, if if an amendment were to be made, that needed, that's the one that would have to be let done legislatively?
So the amendment, we're, we're just acting under the current laws, right?
Got it, okay.
We're acting under the current laws as if nothing's gonna change. We hope the law.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
But that would, okay.
That'd be to make it consistent with current law. You know, we knew that when we entered into the uh Dr. Algais's uh contract, that it would eclipse the drop period, okay? We were hoping that there would be legislative and rulemaking changes before now. We're get, I think we're still getting there, but these things can be gla- glacial.
Yep.
Yeah, so is there, is there any, you know, I know they're glacial, but is there any idea when a decision could be made? And would it be, end up being a partial, partial interim period? Rather than a full year?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. I I think and I, and we have to proceed with great caution here, right? Uh, to me, I think that it is, wh- while I'm, I have some confidence there will be movement made. I think that it will be late in the game, okay? It's, it's not uh atypical to have new laws and rules uh passed beyond uh or as of July one, which is a day late and a dollar short for us, right? Can't do that. And the law is very, very clear that we cannot make any type of arrangements, uh even i- if this board were um inclined to re-engage uh Dr. Algais, and I think that it's safe to say um, for some reason, you all like this person. Uh, but honestly, he's, he's, he's loved. He's done such a great job. We, we all want him to to stay. But we cannot make arrangements. We can't make any type of arrangements for uh re-employment down the road. We just have to see how things play out legislatively.
So I have a question. I, I know that we don't make any decisions today, but from the three options that you gave us um at the end about uh calling in for interviews for other people or 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 moving somebody up from internally. Can we make a decision on that today or to put you in the right direction? Like if none of us really want to go the interview route, can, can we take that off the table today or we can't do that? That has to, you have to put them all in.
No, I, I think I could just come back to you. Uh, you know, if you have any, you can share your thoughts uh as you see fit now on any uh particular individuals. Uh, nothing's stopping you from doing that, but I'm, I'm going to present the three, uh, the one, one and two action items. That is Dr. A's uh contract and then a form contract and then alternatives. Uh, uh, the two, actually two alternatives and number three. Um, but look, the more direction uh that I can get uh the better. And uh it's not um, you know, harmful to discuss these things now openly as you see fit. Or we can just wait until the the sixth.
I'm gonna start.
Good, I'm sorry, good.
I, I said I'm gonna start my closing remarks right now that I'm very unhappy we're even having this conversation. That's gonna be one of my closing remarks that this is just, it's just unbelievable that we all, you know, all of us want to go one, well, I'm not, no, I shouldn't speak for the whole board, but we kind of, I feel like we kind of all want to go one way and our hands are tied with this, but Dr. Algais, I'm very, very unhappy about the way the, that, that it's happening this way. So I just want you to know that. That's my closing remark today.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but it is what it is.
I know, I know, the system, yeah.
But David, um, let me see if I can maybe formulate at least what what I'm thinking on this is that short of making every effort to keep Dr. Algis in the seat that he is uh without, within the boundaries of the law, which is what David just said. Basically, we can't make arrangements, that kind of thing. So short of that, let's put that aside. I think, I don't think there's a lot of objection. If we could achieve that, that'd be great. So I think that would be the first, first kind of goal i- within the boundaries of the law to keep Dr. A in place. The second piece is we should, in in the eventuality that we can't do the first, then we should move in some form with an interim um uh alternative, at least for a period of time. Um, and then the third thing is I do think that we need to give some real thought to um, um, looking at alternatives. We may still come back to the internal candidate or candidates to review, and they certainly would be encouraged to uh uh to, you know, be part of that process. But I do think we need to consider and we should not shut out um some um more uh broader search just to see what's out there. Remember, this is the, this is, this will be the biggest impact, impactful decision that comes to the board. And I think that from a public policy standpoint, we should drive toward looking at all alternatives before we narrow ourselves down just as an obligation of what I think board members' duties are.
I think I, I concur with Ed. I would hate, you know, just to see what politics, especially we live in Broward County, what goes on. And as board members, I think we, we do need to look at all opportunities out there. Um, so.
I, I appreciate you sharing that thought.
It is, it opens, you know, because, you know, when you look back at the history of the boards as well and Florida Virtual School, I think the fact that we need to be very transparent in what we're doing. I think the, the fact that we need to be very transparent in what we're doing and, and have it open process. Um, you know, the final decision is ours uh in the end, but uh having an open process is the best way to do it.
Here's what I, I, if you don't mind, I'll just kind of throw this out there. And, and Sam knows how I, there's so much dislike making him uncomfortable. Uh, but Sam is the guy uh that, that we all think about. Um, uh, on an interim basis, when I say we, from, from the uh, uh, organization administrative and, and executive leadership team. Uh, and that has been, you know, openly uh shared and really discussed at length uh internally. Here's what, what I'm thinking, you know, would the, would the board be inclined uh to install someone like Sam? Um, as the interim, once the time comes, it's gonna be July one, right? That, that it becomes effective in any event. We know this, uh, July one. Um, and it after uh, uh, July one transpires, uh, the board would uh have the stability of. Of Sam at the helm and then can undertake um its search. The benefit then would be if there's going to be change uh legislatively or by rulemaking. And this would be rulemaking by um uh managed services, DMS, in charge of uh the Florida retirement system. Uh, if there are going to be changes, they're gonna take place at some point uh around or shortly after, one would think. Uh, July one. So you'd have that period there where we might have a little bit more um stability in the law. And can make a much uh better informed decision at that point. Is that?
I like that, yeah. I, I li- I like that. I mean, I agree with what Ed said, that we kind of have to be really transparent and, and look at everything. But I, I like that, that we, you know, you put so, it's almost like, I hate to say, but it's like a placeholder. Till we see where things are going, you know, do you hire an interim? You do a full search and you hire somebody and then they only have a job for six months or a year or whatever it is. I mean, that was one of the, like, the little nitpicky things that they're gonna get in the way. So I really, I like that idea for me.
Just, I haven't been on, on the board for all that long, so I'm probably um ha- don't have as much context as um the rest of the members. But just wanted to get um a little bit better understanding. Um, why does the um internally, why is Sam the leading candidate to be interim CEO?
Well, I, I could go on and on about that, uh, but that's something that we could absolutely uh present to you. I want to be uh fair to Sam as well, uh, if, if the board's uh gonna go there and we're more than happy to share. And we could also share uh as a follow-up to this um, to this meeting. There's nothing wrong with doing that. Uh, there cannot be any conduit uh after any such communication. That is, uh, no communication between or among board members on this until the, the board next meets. But I, I'm uh very confident that we would probably reduce something uh on paper. And provide it to you, just so you have something to sink your teeth into. It's a good point, uh, uh, Board Member Garcia.
So I, I think that with respect to process, David, though, uh, uh, Board Member Garcia's point, I think is well taken. Um, cause most of us uh don't quite, not, not that I don't support Sam. And in fact, frankly, um, the, the, what I do know is, you know, he could be, he would be a quality, quality candidate. But the bottom line is, is that I think you have to open up the interim a little bit. So we have some transparency to those qualifications, so we get comfortable around that. I think that's important. So that all board members are making a knowing decision, even if it's an interim piece. And then um, maybe, maybe that interim becomes permanent. But I would suggest to you that we still should look because this is a public process. It's not like we can get in a room and simply decide to anoint somebody. I don't think that's appropriate here. I think um, I would want to encourage internal candidates uh to put their hat in a ring and to be considered. And obviously they have some, some, how would I say, internal advantage of knowing the organization, knowing the direction. Um, all those things and that has to be considered, but I do think that the process needs to be opened up. And we need to be transparent about it. Um, and, and ca- the one caveat is short of. Trying to keep Dr. A in the seat for as long as he wants. I mean, um, so. I, I think we got to avoid, avoid any uh impression. That we are trying to direct this to somebody. We need to follow the process. And if that's somebody is the obvious choice, then that is a lot cleaner from a process standpoint.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is that one of the alternatives, right, uh, that I laid out would be to open up. Uh, um, you know, some sort of pool for internal applicants. And make you aware of who those applicants are, if at all possible, by the December sixth meeting.
So there could be, yeah, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
I, I, uh, Sam says got his hand up to make a comment. I was going to acknowledge him.
Right, I appreciate that, Dr. Watch. And I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I'm honored, I'm flattered to even be in this conversation to begin with. I think I wanted to make it very clear that I think an open, transparent process is absolutely welcome on my part. You know, just knowing as being part of those conversations, I think it's good for the organization. I think that's what I love about being at Florida Virtual School is that there is an open, transparent, accountable, above-board process. In all of this conversation. And Dr. Daggett could never embarrass me, so I don't even know why he would think of saying that. But here we are, and I just wanted to say it's uh been a privilege working with you all thus far. And especially uh Member Garcia, being a newer member, I know we haven't had a ton of time to work together. But I think I, I welcome any transparent process. I think this school deserves the best. So I just want you to hear loudly and clearly from me. I welcome, you know, an open, fair conversation with candidates because this school deserves the best. And I definitely uh would be honored to be a part of that conversation, whatever that process looks like going forward. And the last thing I was gonna say with Dr. A, cause no one can really fill his shoes. I think what's very important is that the mindset here is we're thinking of, how do you keep continuity with an all-star team that's doing so well? Because things are going well, let's continue that upward trajectory. Uh, there's a lot of good processes that are in place from you all as board members. And I think we want to continue to accelerate that and expound upon that and make it something that will continue to be. Uh, a shining light for what online education looks like. So I just wanted to share that with you all. Thanks for giving me a moment, Dr. Watret. I appreciate that.
David, uh, I think you were, you were laying out a process of possibly collecting internal names.
Yeah.
Information to the board.
Right. And, and look, the, the board is also free to reject my recommendations or what I bring to you December sixth. So this is all part of a, a lengthier conversation. And I think that, you know, the, the staging of things uh also when we're looking at um. Uh, you know, transparency and stability, that's what I think we're trying to achieve here. Uh, just so, and I know everyone here knows it, but that's really for the public's uh knowledge as well. Which is one of the meeting uh reasons that we meet uh and build our agenda out in the open. So I, I think what, what I'm hearing is that, you know, we're gonna have those two action items. It's going to be uh, uh, Dr. Algaz's uh amended contract. Um, uh, the uh form contract for an interim CEO. Um, we can, and I think, and you guys, please tell me if I'm wrong, but the way that I'm reading things is. That we can work, and when I say we, this uh leadership team uh, uh, really headed by Dr. A. And HR can put together um, uh, an announcement internally, gather up names. Uh, gather up um, you know, uh, resumes, um, background information. Uh, for the board's uh consumption and get that to you a- as soon as possible. And make it part of uh the public record uh when the time comes. And, and the board may be in a place uh December sixth to um, you know, evaluate and decide upon an interim. And then have plans, uh, as we just said. Uh, that as of July one and pending all of these things in, in the law and, and uh applicable uh rules and regulations. Uh, that subject to change uh in that world. Uh, we could go about and plan for uh getting together again at the July meeting, laying out. Uh, the plan for whatever um additional process the board wants to launch. In search for its um, uh, permanent CEO.
So David, so we're clear, that, that when, if nothing else occurs. When does Dr. A have to step out?
Yeah, so there needs to be a bona fide separation, June third, twenty twenty-three. That means arrangements that.
June thirtieth, June thirtieth.
Thirty, I'm sorry, June thirty.
Thirty.
But we have a line three weeks early there, dude.
So, so wow, David, the, the uh, the, so Dr. A would remain at the helm. Through June thirty, and then the interim, if we so chose, would be dealt with. Uh, that would, the first day would be July first. Is that fair from a, just a general timing?
July first, right. The, the, the contract, the interim CEO contract would become effective July one.
All right, so I, I'm, I'm sorry, can, uh, John?
Go ahead, go ahead, continue.
I just wanted to follow my, um, so I don't think we should rush in the interim piece. I think that we should endeavor to have that uh process at least started come. December, we might wanna um, but I don't know if we need to make that decision. Is there some reason why we would have to make that decision sometime before the end of the year? Or can we make it sometime in the first quarter of next year?
So that, that's why I'm putting the time in the other as I am, because we only have that, those two quarterly meetings, December and March. You know, the June meeting is gonna be too late, obviously. So, so the, the issue is, and this is one of the alternatives that I, I've offered to the board. And will uh offer is to direct HR to get uh things underway. Okay, with, uh, if you would like to go with a national search, regional search, whatever. But we would need to have um final interviews. Um, you know, there could be a first round interview uh with HR staffing and so on and so forth. Finalists come to the board, the board makes its selection and then directs me to negotiate a contract. Which can be time consuming. So I, I'm, I would love to have a clue coming out of the December sixth meeting.
So can, can I make a suggestion on timing? I'm sorry, John. I, I, John, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm just, it's just getting clarity on, um, so. Dr. A steps down June thirtieth or retires.
Yes.
If, so he's got, so is there him coming back? What's the options of him coming back in all this?
So we cannot make, the, the law says that you cannot make arrangements for this retiree coming back. Okay, if and, you know, when the six month passes, the six months of separation or has to be six months separation. Uh, bona fide retirement, then you can consider uh readdressing this issue.
But we would have to, that, sorry, David, but we would ha- then have to uh open the process at that time also to, to. Uh, for candidates to apply. It's not an automatic that we reinstate Dr. Algas, is that correct?
It's really up to the board. The board has, you know, just as, as mentioned, right? You, you all know fiduciary duties, so reasonable business judgment. And number two, the only restriction is to choose someone outside of the board's membership pursuant to the bylaws. So yes and no. This would be a different applicant because uh this person has shown uh his leadership. Has a history of shown demonstrated leadership for the organization. Different strokes for different strokes when it comes to that.
That's a question that I had before that I was trying to, without saying it in, in that way. So if, if he has to leave June thirtieth, but he may be able to come back in six months, but we're not allowed to assume that, right? Legally, we're not allowed to assume that. So if you're gonna do a search and like whatever, a national search, a regional search, which I, you know, I understand. You want to be open with everything, but. Are we hiring somebody new as the next CEO? Or are we keeping that open in six months for Dr. Algaz, but we're not allowed to do that? So that's, that was what I was trying to ask before, like, how do you even do that search with not real? It's very up in the air to me, the, the, all, the whole process.
So could, could I put it some timing around this, David? Maybe it'd be helpful.
Yeah, Ed, I need help with this.
If you started with June thirtieth as the marker, because that you gotta work backward from there. Assume that we, we directed HR to begin the process internally for a potential interim. Um, effective July one, and it would just be interim.
Mm-hmm.
Then that process could take and we could actually finalize that process as late as our March meeting. But maybe we'd have a special meeting if we wanted to do it earlier, just as a, as, just.
That's right.
Play with that piece, where we would basically name an interim effective July one. At that point, we will have taken care of ourselves with respect to leadership. Uh, through at least July and given us some ability from window thereafter with the interim in charge. Assuming it's Sam as an example, to then, we could then at either the March meeting or the June meeting. Direct staff to begin to open up the process for some sort of search process that would extend beyond June. Um, that both the interim could participate in and others internally could participate. And if they want to put their hat in a ring as, for the permanent place. As well as Dr. A, should he be allowed to, if the rules change thereafter, after June. And as well as opening up to others in the general public, whether it's state or national or whatever, we could decide that scope later on. But that process would not start until after June. And in a, in a, in a earnest way, we would just prep it up until June and then we go out for a search post-June. Um, and that could include anybody who is up for the interim or the interim. That could include Dr. A if his circumstances change. And that ain't, that would also include everybody and anybody in the general public, either statewide or nationally. And so then the board after June could then make that decision around timing and allow for that process. To take two or three or four or five months. And we may have, look, assume for a second that we talked about Sam being the interim. Assuming if Sam, I think Sam is a very serious candidate for the permanent slot. So we're not gonna be in, in worst case scenario, have Sam lead the helm as the interim for a period of time. Isn't, is not a bad spot for us to be, and it gives us time to open it up. And if Sam ends up being the choice, or if Dr. A, some circumstance, ten, Dr. A's able to come back. Then that gives us maximum flexibility as well as being transparent. That's what I would suggest by way of timing.
Thank you, Ed. That's exactly the way, that's exactly the way I, yeah, that, that's the way I was trying to picture it.
Um, Ed, just one, one thing. So the whole process you described, that would take place with, you're saying with Sam as interim?
Yeah.
Assuming, assuming, we, we would direct today's HR to begin to look internally for an interim alternatives. And let's just assume that it, it was one, it would be Sam. And so we would go ahead and deal with that and get him under contract on an interim basis, say February, March timeframe. So this way, we know July, so there's an appropriate ninety-plus days that, that they can transition and that all of that can get worked out. So from organizational standpoint, we're protected. And as of July first, assuming nothing else changed, Sam would take over as, as an exec. I'm just using him as the mark of Sam, I apologize.
But we'd have some process for naming Sam interim. That's what I wanted.
And also probably you would like to have resumes and things from, from people, I'm sure, but we'd all like that, right?
For interim as well, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, on that, on, on your timeline there, on, and, and, I understand it, but. So Dr. Alguers has got to be out for at least six months. That's before he could even be considered to come back. Do we, are we saying that? That process of hiring could go, he could then submit his name, knowing that we're going to hire six months out. That he would be eligible to come back. Is that, is that what we're looking at?
I think, I think the best thing that we need to do, and, and I think that. It's just because Ed Pozzoli is more handsome and more articulate than I am. That we're basically going the way of bringing you the names of internal candidates. December sixth. A decision will be made no later than the end of your quarterly meeting in March. To make a selection. That you, you will then have your interim CEO, you meet again in June. The, I, it's our guess that even if the needle is going to move statutorily or regulatory world. It, it won't move by then, but you'll have time. Once the July one, new fiscal year begins to answer those questions that we're speculating about right now. That's all we can do and it's, I'm not saying it's a bad thing to do it. But we're basing everything kind of off of that. We're gonna have greater certainty. There's no question, we're gonna have greater certainty. I would guess definitely by the end of July of, of. This next coming year, when it comes to the statutes and regulations. So, and then the board can, at its first meeting of the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Make a decision, you know, take, we're taking this one step at a time, one step at a time. And I think that.
If nothing changes. I'm sorry, if, if nothing, i- is the six month rule in no matter what happens? Or no, that we're waiting for that too?
The six month rule is applicable. We have to, you know, it is the law. And by the way, I can tell you. That I personally thoroughly investigated all different outlets of what the law permits. Okay, to break down to asking, you know, decision makers, what would you think on a hypothetical A, B, and C? So we know that the law right now requires a bona fide separation. June thirtieth, there can be no arrangements. Period. And, and if, you know, once six months thereafter passes. Then we can consider, and Dr. Alguers can consider. What, what options are available for a successor CEO?
If I could, you know, just chip in here, I, I get a little nervous that, about this whole process. I think we all think Dr. Alguers is the one a wonderful guy, would like to, wish this, that wasn't put in front of us. But I really get nervous that we're, we're leading it down to him coming back without doing the. Belts and suspenders on the intern. I think that, you know, going inside is great, having somebody that's been on the team, like an NFL team. Bringing a, a coach that knows the plays, knows everything, bringing them up is great. But not at least putting it out there to the open could be of, looking like we're setting this thing up. And I don't want any appearance of that. So I, I would suggest we look at it and advertise it as. You know, it, this could only be a six month intern and, and that. You, you know, whoever applies understands that and then probably will understand that they're gonna go against the, the previous coach. That's won several Super Bowls. So I, I, I'm leaning towards, you know, opening it up, not just internally. Just for the perception that we're, we're not leading this to what David was clear on would be illegal.
I agree. I think it's, I think that's important.
But, but would you feel comfortable with what Ed said, where we, July first, we actually do open it up? We just have somebody in place so that we're not, so we know more of where things are going, but then July first, we open it up. But at least we have somebody in place on July first.
Look, I'm okay with opening, I'm okay with opening it up. You know, if we wanted to direct staff to begin looking at what it would take to have. A, a, a national search type start in March. As well as approve an interim at that time, just in case that search takes a lot longer than we think.
In, in, in doing this, is this, i- is the search done internally by HR? Or is, or do we secure a search firm to look at getting candidates for it?
Is the question related to the interim or the more permanent?
Permanent.
I would do it, look, I, I would be against. Anything but opening it fully up to the permanent, to the permanent piece. Interim, I don't have a problem with doing an.
I don't have a problem either with an interim.
But the permanent one, I, I would encourage internal candidates. I would encourage if, if, certainly encourage Dr. A, if the circumstances changed, to put his name in the hat. But frankly, you know, I don't want to speak for him. If, if he's, he may, he may move on to something else, so he's got a lot of opportunities. So in the meantime, so by the time he's able to even consider it. I don't know that.
That, that, that's the part I'm still slightly unclear about, is this six month period, you know. He cannot do anything for six months. So I mean, we, we start hiring, we start the process to secure a full-time. CEO starting June. If, if we, if we get candidates and we select someone by September, then Dr. Alguers is not even in the timeline. To be able to put his name in the hat.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, David, if, if, if we opened up a national search. Let's say we even went ahead and hired, say, a national, a national search firm to identify potential candidates. No matter who the candidate is, anybody, anybody who, well. Most candidates, I've been through this before, most candidates whom the search firm would identify. Will probably be employed somewhere else. And so you're always looking at somebody who is already employed, who you're gonna have to have some timetable. Even when the board makes a final kind of conversation or, you know, final decision on who they really want. It's still gonna be sometime, it's not gonna happen the next day because you're gonna have to deal with somebody else, right? And so, so you're gonna have some timetable. So David, let me ask you this question. Assuming that we opened it up, I'm now talking about the permanent side. Soon we opened it up to a national search, July first, we opened the whole thing up and, and hired a search firm. Began that process, assuming that process took ninety to a hundred and twenty days for them to bring us good candidates. Even though it's within the six month timeframe. Could, would the law allow for Dr. A, assuming that he wanted to? Take part in that search even during the six months, even though, even though. He would not be rehired until after that six month run.
Yep.
Thank you, Ed, that's, that's.
That's an interesting hypothetical, okay, an interesting hypothetical, and I've learned not to answer hypotheticals, but here's my gut. Okay, my gut is that number one, i- if, you know, if, if you're going, if you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound. When it comes to the national search, that is typically done best and mo- most efficiently through an external. Source, okay?
Right.
That we could come to you, we could plan on bringing to the board, because that itself is time consuming. And maybe even subject to some sort of competitive solicitation, which is always where we err on the side of. And then what I'm thinking is that maybe at the March meeting, the board will be presented with a decision. Hey, do you, do you want to go with this firm, yea or nay? What timeline are we looking at? All of those things, and this is for a national search for a, a permanency. If you want to call it that, and they do their thing, these things can be quite time consuming in and of themselves, particularly at the national level. That by the time the six months has come and gone, you know, it could, it's possible that the six months has already come and gone. By the time the board is equipped to make a decision.
So David, I, you know, and I mean, we're, a lot of discussion on this and I think it is. And it's an important addition, it's a important issue for the board, because it's one of the main win decisions we have to make.
Absolutely.
Hiring the CEO, I, I would reckon, given that we know that Dr. Alguers has to leave June thirtieth. We, we want to have an open, transparent process, which would be include. Engaging a search firm to help us do that process. I think the best way forward is for us to consider internal candidates for an interim, starting on July one. And then we process with looking for a full, the, I've opened the process using a search firm. For a full-time position and set the timeline for that.
Yeah, within, within your next fiscal year, absolutely.
Correct.
Absolutely. I, I think we have, and look, I'm so happy that everyone has chimed in here. And all of us want this to be as thorough, transparent, informed as possible. And that's what this is all about. We're talking about it openly and honestly at a workshop, developing a proposed agenda. We're gonna do our best to put together agenda items for the board's action at its December sixth meeting. Will, which will hopefully meet the needs and the will of the board at the December sixth meeting, and we'll take it from there.
So prior to that meeting, David, you will provide us with. Details of, of this discussion and, and resumes and CVs of internal candidates who are interested in. Stepping up to the interim role.
Yeah, so that's something that, remember, I, I represent the board in the negotiation of a contract. So I think that this can be done and I will work shoulder to shoulder with Dr. Alguers and his staff. To make sure that we open things up internally and relay to each of you. Certainly in time for December sixth to have gone through things and to consider whatever candidate pool that there is.
David, could I ask you, put together a proposed timeline that deals with the two steps, meaning the interim side. And then the permanent side, and this way every board member can see that on a piece of paper, so they understand the timeline. Say by the December meeting, this way, this way, if they have any additional comments on that, they can voice those.
So just, just to close this out and talk it, the, all of the board, necessarily to the board members, and it's that, you know, we're not taking a motion here. But I would like to hear from each of, if everyone's comfortable with this, this discussed process that we've outlined. Going forward as now. Ms. Garcia?
It will, and may I, i- if there are any objections to it, that, that helps me.
Okay.
So the question is, are there any objections to what we've discussed?
Yes.
No, I, I feel like we were thorough, and as long as our consensus is that we're being completely transparent. At every, both interim level and then the eventual search for our permanent replacement. And that will be presented a clear timeline by December sixth that we'll be able to vote on. If I understood all of that correctly, then I'm good to go.
Yes.
Ed, you're comfortable with this?
Yes, Chair, yes.
Mr. Conhamnis?
Yes, Chair.
And I am, and we're the only person that does not be, and, and Ms. Ryder?
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm good.
And, and, uh, Board Member Arsa, we need to bring brief him on this as well. Cause he's, he's, needs to be a key part of this discussion.
Did hear from a member Arsa that he wasn't gonna be able to make this meeting today, so we'll reach out to him and David will probably fill in.
Well, we'll make sure that this is must-see TV in his corner of the globe on YouTube.
So David, I think you've got clear guidelines of where we're heading on this, so we'll wait for your.
I do, I, really, I appreciate it, and this is the deliberative process, so I really do appreciate your, your openness and candor. Back to you, Dr. A.
All right, thank you, sir. I cannot tell you how old talking about retirement feels after having gone to my forty-year class reunion Saturday. I don't recommend that for anyone. Does not, not put the spring in your walk, and I'd also like to wholeheartedly make a comment in public. That Sam Burgis is a spectacular person, and I would, if my children weren't adults, I would give them to him to raise. He's that good of a person, so, all right, well, I'm back to our list here. December sixth quarterly board meeting agenda will be timely posted in the public by all of you to reach out to me anytime, a day or night, anything you need, please reach out and let me know. Looks forward to seeing some of you at our annual professional learning conference at the end of the month. And turn it over back to you, Chair, so we can address the last.
All right, thank. Yeah, thank you, thank you, everyone, for the, the great discussion on that, both in, in the tutoring part of it. Discussion and also with this change in CEO that we're going to have to address going forward. I don't, I, I have no further closing remarks, so I will just turn it over to Ms. Ryder. For closing remarks.
I did mine already, but thank you again, everybody, for putting all this together and. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Garcia?
Thanks, everybody. It was great generative discussion today. I think we made a lot of progress, so I, I really appreciated personally. Hearing everybody's thoughts and seeing that we were all rowing in the same direction, so thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Conhamnis?
No, I just got a great, great conversations. One of the things I'd really like to do is get the temperature on. You know, I know, David, you keep saying that we don't have a crystal ball and things take time, but the possibility of having it all changed. Before June thirtieth, if we can get some probabilities somehow with that and anybody that has any connections in Tallahassee. I.e. Ed can get us a temperature by the next meeting of what they're hearing, what they're seeing. If there's anything we can do to call our representatives or whoever to push it, so the thing goes quicker, so we don't have to go through this process. I don't think anybody on this call wants to do that, so I'd like to get some better information on, on the process. How we can help move that forward, so we don't have to go through this.
I agree, thank you. And Board Member Pozzoli?
Let me just, first thank David. David has done great work in flushing these issues out. It, it's a lot, it's complicated. And just so you all know, contextually, this issue about drop and how it, how it impacts, it goes well beyond Dr. A. I mean, we're focused on Dr. Alguers and wanting to keep somebody who's been a great leader for the organization. But it goes beyond, so in Tallahassee, from a policy standpoint, they're looking at a handful of, a lot of people. Kind of being subject to this in a, in a job employment environment that's very tight. And so there is some good policy discussion having with, with a broader focus than just our issue here with Dr. A. Just so you understand the context of it, it's far greater than what we're specifically dealing with. So, but thank you, David, for keeping track of that. I really do appreciate the work.
And, and I would echo that with David, you really do a great job in, in what you do in the legal part of. Florida Virtual School and, and, you know, today's been a, actually, this has been a really good meeting. And it's good to see that all the board members are, are participating in the dialogue and discussion of. Where we're going and that's, that's an important part of being on the board is to be, express your concerns and, and bring up. Thoughts is sometimes difficult, that we all have to do it and it's betterment for Florida Virtual School as we do this. So thank you to all the fellow board members and also thank you to Florida Virtual School staff for all the stuff that you do to put things together for us. So that's my closing remarks. I'll pass, go back. Dr. Alguers, do you have any final words?
No, once again, I've said it before, I'll say it again, it is an honor and a pleasure to work with all of you. You are a spectacular board. And, and today's discussions really do highlight how wonderful you are and what a great job you do and how much care you take and what you do for this organization. And I thank you for that on behalf of myself and the entire staff.
Thank you, and David, General Counsel, any final words?
I wouldn't do that to you. I wouldn't do that to you.
Uh uh okay, I appreciate that, so this concludes today's workshop meeting, um. Thank everyone for attending the meeting, and you have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
A second. A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, the, so the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone, everyone, have a good day and stay safe with uh Nicole.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, bye.